All right, good evening everyone. We'd like to welcome you all right here to the Hancock County Public Library in beautiful downtown Greenfield, Indiana. We're here tonight, we're going to be having a discussion amongst the candidates who are seeking election for the Republican Party in the two district seats, two of the three district seats that we have for county commissioner. So, we have, actually District One has three candidates that are right here. Randy Harrison is over here, he's one of the candidates. The second candidate here in the center is John Jessup and Randy Sorrell. So these are the three candidates that will be talking to you tonight about District One. In District Number Three, down at Tefar In, we have incumbent Brad Armstrong, who is seeking reelection, and then his opponent is Matt Holland. So those two will be discussing for District Number Three. Now, something for you people in the audience to know and everyone else to know out there, although these are representing specific districts, everybody in the county can vote. You can vote for these candidates. So it's very important each person will be able to vote. Doesn't matter which district you live in, the way the candidates come through depend upon the districts that they live in. So each candidate, each person will have an opportunity to vote. So it's very important you listen to both sets of candidates, or all five candidates here, to make it sure to figure out the one that you want to vote for. So the way this thing will start out tonight, we're going to have two minutes, opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to talk about whatever they want to talk about. I'll have the timer to go through. When there's 15 seconds left, just if you hear a little bell, that go like that, that means the 15 second, kind of gives the candidates time to wrap it up. And then at two minutes, hopefully I can turn my little phone thing off, it will beep or whatever to kind of say, okay, two minutes is up. If they're finishing up a sentence or whatever, we'll obviously let them finish it up. If it goes too long, each person here and each person in the audience knows that there is a secret sound that will happen if you have to go beyond it. But hopefully we won't have to use that secret sound. If you want to hear the secret sound, you'll just have to come being live, because hopefully we won't use that. So anyways, we're going to start off, I'm going to start at the very end. I'm going to start with Brad Armstrong. He's a candidate for District Three, County Commissioner. Brad, I'd like to give you two minutes, and then after that, I'll give Matt the two minutes, and then we'll work our way down through here. So if you'd like to start your two minutes right now.
Okay, thanks for moderating tonight, Wayne, we appreciate it. I'd like to thank Daily Reporter for putting this on, it's a great forum. I'd like to thank everybody for taking time out of their busy schedules this Friday night. My name's Brad Armstrong. It's been my privilege to be your Hancock County Commissioner in District Three for the last seven and a half years. It's also been my honor to be President for three terms. Tonight, I'd like to share with you a success story, a Hancock County success story. My first day in office was January 1st, 2009, and it wasn't a particularly good time for Hancock County. We were within $200,000 of running out of money at year-end. We had an office that had corruption and theft. We were turning paved roads to gravel. We were $11 million in debt. We had record-high unemployment, and we faced massive declines in assessed value, and we had runaway insurance costs. In just short, a short eight years, with the hard work of our dedicated employees, my fellow elected officials, and my department heads, we've been able to use my leadership skills and strong business knowledge to provide for a successful turnaround in Hancock County. We now have our fiscal house in order, we have proper balances for our accounts, we have cut debt in half. We have a long-term road plan that touches every road in the county within seven years. We've provided an additional $500,000 per year going directly towards maintenance, while we still have our large capital projects that are accomplished with federal aid and local financing. Just since 2012, Hancock County has had 3,200 new jobs come to our county, and those new jobs have an average wage of over $50,000 a year. We've had $588 million since 2012 in investment. I would like for you to allow me to continue to provide the successful, strong, proven leadership over the next four years, so we can continue on the successful proactive path. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oops, Lord. All right, thank you, sir. Now I'd like to ask Matt Holland, also a candidate for District Three, you have your two minutes to speak to the public, please.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and hearing what the Hancock County candidates have to say. I'd like to thank the Daily Reporter for sponsoring this event, and the Hancock County Library for hosting this event, and thank you, Wayne, for volunteering your time to be the moderator for this event. My name is Matt Holland, I'm a lifelong resident of Hancock County, having deep roots and have lived in three different communities in Hancock County, that being Fortville, Greenfield, New Palestine. I currently reside in New Palestine and have for the past 13 years. I graduated from Greenfield Central High School, went on to earn an education in my Associate of Science degree in Criminal Justice from Indiana University, where I was then hired by the Greenfield Police Department and graduated from Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. I proudly served the Greenfield citizens for the past seventeen and a half years as a Greenfield police officer, during which time I have served as a narcotics detective, a supervisor, and I'm currently lieutenant and the day shift commander for the Greenfield Police Department. I believe with my education background and my experience in law enforcement and criminal justice, I would be a valuable asset to the Hancock County Board of Commissioners in solving any issues of public safety, two of which are at the forefront right now, the jail overcrowding and the heroin epidemic. I believe that I could provide valuable insight and assistance in working with the Hancock County Sheriff's Department, Prosecutor's Office, the courts, and all the other offices of Hancock County, to give them the tools that they need to be effective and efficient in tackling these two issues and any other issues concerning public safety. I'll be proactive in my stances on economic development, road improvements, and public amenities. I will be committed to community and focused on the future of Hancock County. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, Tom Stevens is actually the current Commissioner of District Three, and he is not seeking reelection, so we have three men here who are wanting to fill that position. I'd like to ask Randy Harrison to start off with District One candidates, and do your two minutes, and let the people know why you're wanting this position, sir.
I am Randy Number One. I'm Randy Harrison. I'm a resident of Vernon Township. I'm a United States Air Force veteran. I am a retired Christian minister, and now I'm an independent financial advisor. When I retired from ministry, I moved my family to Vernon Township, and I'm a homeowner there. I'm also a butler bulldog. I was a bulldog before it was cool. My experience in the county in particular began, politically, began when myself and a few others launched the Tea Party of Hancock County, and since about, well, early 2010, I, along with others, have watched the county closely. And in that time, I've seen progress, but I've seen some things that are quite disturbing to me. Among those is the transparency of our government. At times, it seems that things happen behind the scenes, and then all of a sudden, they appear out of nowhere. This bothers me a lot. We operate in the county with a tremendous amount of cash in our coffer, and yet, over the last five or six years, we have borrowed money several times. In fact, to give you an example of this, in 2013, there was a resolution to borrow money just under $2 million, and in the course of that year, the purpose of that money borrowing changed four times. That tells me that there was no purpose for that money. So in spite of what we heard about the successes, it's not all, it's cracked up to be, in my opinion, and we can do much better. This county needs a new voice, and I am that voice.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now the next candidate is John Jessup.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the Hancock County Public Library and the Greenfield Reporter for putting this event on tonight and making it available online. Thank you to everybody that came out and took time on a Friday evening to come and hear what we have to say. And I want to thank these gentlemen that are sitting up here at this table with me, to stand for public office and put your life and your family in the public eye and public scrutiny is something to be really lauded. Randy, I think with, over the last years, with your work with the Tea Party, you've brought a lot of ideas and issues to the forefront, and I appreciate the work you've done there. And Randy Sorrell, I appreciate working with you on the short time that you've been on the council. I appreciate the things that you bring to the table. And Matt, I appreciate your service to the people of Greenfield, and putting your life on the line and being willing to stand up and stand for public office. And Brad, I really appreciate the six years that we've worked together. We've been a part of the team that's brought us back from financial ruin. Not everybody always agrees how to get there, but we've always figured it out. And that's why I feel like I'm the best candidate to be the next Commissioner from District One. I've been there, I've seen where we were six years ago, I've been part of the team that has brought us back from that. I know where we are now, so I can hit the ground running, and I share a very good vision of where we can go, and I'm ready to lead.
All right, thank you, sir. The final candidate in District One is Randy Sorrell.
Thank you, Mr. Addison. Thank you, folks, for coming out this evening, and thanks for you who will join us online at some point over the next few weeks. My name is Randy Sorrell. I'm an attorney. I live in McCordville. I've been a resident of McCordville for about nine years. I've been practicing law in this county since 1987. I have a private practice that I started in Fortville in 1992. I moved my practice here because, as a young lawyer with a young family, I wanted to find a place to set my roots down, grow my family, and have opportunities in good schools and all those things you want when you move someplace. I was fortunate, very fortunate, that an older attorney by the name of Walter Johnson asked me if I'd be interested in taking over his practice. We negotiated that. I moved my family here in 1992. I'm proud of the fact that over the last 24 years, I've grown that from a single attorney office to a three attorney office, tripling the size of that business. It's been a successful business, and I'm proud of that achievement. Living in Vernon Township for the last 24 years, I've seen the growth that we have experienced there, which has been explosive in the last few years, certainly in the last three years, and realizing the issues that are native to our particular part of the county, and I certainly want to accentuate those if I am elected. Part of what I've done over the last 24 years is I've had a lot of civic involvement. I share somewhat in the success stories that Mr. Armstrong was talking about, we talked about all the capital investment. I have been the longest-serving member of the County Council for Economic Development, taking a position on that board in 1999, and have been on the Executive Committee since 2004. I am civic-minded, I am all about making Hancock County even a better place because it's a great place to pass off to my kids and hopefully my grandchildren in the future. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to get into the questions, and so what I'm going to do, the first question I'm going to give to Matt, okay, as far as to give you the first question, and then after that, I will have Brad, that way, as far as you're both in the same district, and then we will start off on this side with John. John Jessup will start off on this side, just so that you guys know. But the first question that I've been asked to ask you, what are your top three goals for the position of County Commissioner if you are elected? That's for you, Matt.
All right, my top three goals for County Commissioner should I be elected would be, first of all, like I said in my opening statement, is work with the Hancock County Sheriff's Department, Probation Department, Coroner's Office, the courts, Prosecutor's Office, et cetera, in trying to solve this heroin epidemic and give them the assistance and the tools that they need to get this problem under control. Trust me, having been a narcotics detective at the Greenfield Police Department, it is a big problem, and it needs to be solved, and I am willing to give them the tools to do that effectively and efficiently. Secondly, I would like to be a strong advocate for positive economic growth and residential growth. I want to be proactive in that field and go out and get the type of growth that Hancock County needs and wants, and I believe that comes in a cycle with also improving our public amenities, such as our trails and our parks, and possibly the possible future of the 4-H fairgrounds. I believe this comes full circle, and I will work wholeheartedly to solve both of those issues, but most importantly, also included in this is the problem we're going to be facing as far as the jail overcrowding. This is going to be a hefty project that we're going to be presented with, and I believe we need to get the ball rolling on that now, because it's going to be a very drawn-out, long process, and it's going to be very expensive. So I believe we need to start forward with that now, and I'm sure there's, I'm aware there's already studies, but I want to keep that moving forward, and we need to come to a workable solution on that to solve that issue. I don't think we can put it on the back burner any longer. Those are my three main goals if I was to be lucky enough to be elected as your Commissioner. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Brad Armstrong, same question. What are your top three goals for the position of Commissioner if you are reelected?
Well, the number-one priority, I think, is roads. You know, getting opponents all the time keeps you campaigning, and last time I ran, my constituency said, "We want better roads." And I listened to that, and we've been working on that. So we're going to continue to fight for money. You know, we've worked with the legislature this year, and we've got kind of a Band-Aid fix, but we're going to have to continue for a long-term solution. That's the number-one priority. Along the lines of what Matt said, public safety issues as far as our jail, you know, our jail's overcrowded, and we've tried to be proactive on that. We actually had a decline in population for a long time, and then with state sentencing guideline reforms and kind of the spike in the drug use, the hard drug use, we've overcrowded. And on schedule with council, we worked to do a study. It's due to be concluded here in about a month, and we're going to come up with a long-term plan to fix it, and that could have a lot of different layers on how that is. You've got to fix today's problem, and then you also got to look 10 years out and 20 years out. And it's going to take money. I mean, cut and dry, it's going to take money. Criminals cost all of us taxpayers and working people a lot of money. It's my job to figure out how to make them cost the least, but keep us out of court and make sure they're punished properly. You know, the heroin epidemic that you've talked about, that hits real close to home to me. I've got a good friend here, buddy. Hits close to home. It brought me aware, I never would have thought, we'd have somebody new pal, you know, buddy of mine, you know, sundies. I mean, that's bad stuff. It can happen anywhere. It's too cheap, and we've got to be proactive on it. So that's, I guess that's only two.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll come over to District Three, or District One, excuse me. John Jessup, I'll ask you to begin the question first. What are your top three goals for the position of County Commissioner if you are elected?
Well, again, I have to agree with Brad. The roads are the biggest situation that I hear about, and I think we need to elect a Commissioner that understands the way most people in the county are. I don't know about you, but I'm one bad pothole away from a repair that I can't afford that will put my finances in a tailspin that will take months to recover from. I mean, I'm raising six kids. It's difficult. And along those same lines, another priority would be public safety. I've worked for the last six years on the county council to make sure that we have ALS service to everybody in the county. I think it's important that, no matter where you are geographically in the county, or how much your property is worth, that when you pick up the phone, that an ambulance is going to come. And then, of course, economic development. We need to make sure that we are bringing jobs to Hancock County, which we've made a lot of headway with. Couldn't do that without the Mount Comfort Road corridor, but I think we need to balance that corridor and the needs there while we don't turn our back on the roads that we already have, that we're already charged with taking care of. And while we need to worry about economic development there, I'd like to see us work on some economic development somewhere east of 600 West, because there's a lot of us that live out there. So that would be my priorities. I think we've made a lot of headway with roads, with coming up, with the council coming up with ways to come up with additional funding, and I think we can do better.
All right, thank you, sir. This time, Randy Sorrell. What are your top three goals for the position of County Commissioner if you are elected?
Well, I will be the broken record and say my top priority was probably roads, and the second would be public safety, if they go hand-in-hand. And the third, we'll deal with in a moment. I answered this question for the newspaper, and I said, "Development of a fiscally responsible funding plan for a definitive timeline for the reconstruction of Mount Comfort Road." But the fact is, that is a part of roads, which is the bigger issue. I drive all over this county. I do a lot of work out of the county, so I take various routes. I've driven on several of the roads, and unlike John, I've not missed a pothole, I in fact hit one and lost a tire this year. I lost a wheel two years ago, so I understand the pain of those repairs. But as far as we have, the council has done a fine job, and the Commissioners have put a great plan in place for every year. We are increasing funding for road maintenance and road repair. There was a lot of work to be done because of the lean times that we had. I'm sure you didn't do things to your houses you needed to do, and when you finally have the funds to fix it, you've got a lot of fixing to do, and that's what these roads have been like. But that plan is being implemented, it's being worked, and progress is being made. Mount Comfort Road is a little bit different because it is attached to, at least part of it is actually in what's called a TIF district, the rest of it is not, but it touches it. There are other funds that are available through the Redevelopment Commission that can supplant some of the other funding that we might be looking at. It's an 80/20 federal project. It's on the timeline, but it's 15 years out. The bridge across Pendleton Pike and the railroad tracks has got to get built. Living there, I can tell you that the bottleneck is unbelievable. The second thing I want to talk about is the jail. There are ways that with low-level offenders, we can use community-based services, mental health services, drug prevention services, work release, home detention, other ways to empty the jails.
Perfect, right on there. I was getting ready to do the secret code, but you were perfect, right on there. Okay, excuse me. Now this time, the other Randy, Randy Harrison, if you would answer the same question, what are your top three goals for the position of County Commissioner if you are elected?
Well, this is probably not the right question to be the last guy on the list, because it's a repeat. Without question, we have to repair roads. One of the difficulties with our county roads is they were developed 100 years ago by a grader, and then someone just dropping gravel down. There was not actually a road bed laid down in much of the county, which means that repairing these things, if we do it right, a lot of this county needs a bed laid down, not just more asphalt. So, you know, it's a little extra expense. In terms of public safety, that's already been mentioned, I'm not going to disagree. This is a major problem for us. We've got to address it. Sin is expensive, you know, we've got to address it, and it's going to cost us money. The one thing I will say about growth is some of the disturbing aspects of the last six years that I've seen is that we've been willing to go into debt as a county for normal operations. I don't think that's an appropriate use of taxpayer money. If it comes to building a jail, some outsized cost like that, then we're going to have to borrow money, but we should not be borrowing money for normal county operations. One of my goals is to rein that in a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now this time, what I'm going to do, I'm going to actually start with Randy, and we'll do the candidates from District One first, and then we'll do you guys. That way, again, each one of you can kind of handle it that way, plus, that's just what I said I was going to do, so that's a good reason. So this time, Randy, and each one of you, I think, actually even touched on this, Randy Sorrell, this time.
I'm on number two.
Huh?
Apparently on number two.
Well.
I am, I'm.
Yeah, okay. But anyways, this is the question, I think each one of you touched on it, so this will give you a chance to go two more minutes as far as talking a little bit further. The question is, overcrowding at the jail has become an ongoing point of discussion with possible solutions, including building an entirely new facility, expanding our community corrections program, or sentencing more low-level offenders to home detention or probation. What is the best plan for housing our county's growing number of inmates? You've got two minutes, sir.
I laugh because Mr. Addison and I work together on this almost every day. As I've told you, I'm an attorney. I spend a lot of time in the criminal courts. I was there this morning, I've been in court three times this week dealing with people in jail. I do a lot of criminal work. I'm probably more familiar with this than most people, and possibly Mr. Holland down the way here. There were changes in the sentencing laws that required that, quite frankly, the state didn't want to house prisoners anymore. They're finding a way to shove them back into the communities, and Hancock County is not unique. All 92 counties, the jails are overcrowded. This is a problem that has been thrust upon us by the good folks in Indianapolis. There are some things that we can do. I asked the jail commander last week, and while we are overcrowded, about a third of the people that are sitting in our jail are awaiting court dates. That is, they went to court, they were charged, a bond was set, they can't post bond. At the present time, we have only cash bonds, so if you have a $1,000 bond, it means you post $1,000. There was a time we used surety bonds, which meant if your bond was $1,000, you posted $100. If we can get, if we can maybe reinstate, there were reasons the courts went to cash bonds, and I think maybe we're seeing now that there's a better way to approach that, but changing the bonding structure, I've talked with the judges about that, they seem open to the idea, that would get some of those pre-trial detainees out of the jails much sooner. We are talking about misdemeanors in the lowest level of felonies. Most of these typically are nonviolent, and I can tell you, when it comes to, if a facility has to be built, a non-secure facility like a home detention or a community corrections work release center is far, far cheaper than a jail. The jail is the last thing you want to spend money on. There are cheaper alternatives. I intend to explore and exploit every one of those before we have to do a new jail.
All right, thank you, sir. Now Randy Harrison, the same question. You want me to reread the question?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure, your turn, sir.
And I'll just be bluntly honest, this is a place where I would defer to the sheriff, and we'll find solutions. I'm not an expert in this, I'm a financial advisor, I know money, I don't know law. And there are solutions, I'm aware of it, I've studied it, I know that the law was changed two years ago. It places a tremendous burden on our county and on our revenue, but, you know, if we can create some kind of a step-down system, makes a lot of sense to me. I'd be for that.
Okay, John Jessup, you want me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
Randy Sorrell, thank you for giving, you know, pretty much the whole answer.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
The job of the Commissioners is to set priorities in the county, have a plan, and then execute that plan. I think one thing that I would bring to the table there is foresight. When these new guidelines came out a little over a year ago, or actually before that, when we knew they were going to come out, I was on the council saying, "What's this going to do to us? This is going to cost us money. We've been talking for two years about our jail being under-crowded, and probably this time next year, we're going to be overcrowded. So why don't we look at hiring another probation officer? Let's look at expanding our home detention." And, you know, we decided that we didn't have the money to do that, because we didn't want to have the foresight to solve problems. What we've tended to do in the county since I've been on the council is wait for things to be an emergency. Wait until the locks at the jail don't work, and that'll be our emergency, that'll be our reason to do a bond. And then the next year, the emergency will be that we forgot to buy keys for the locks, the control panel. We need to have a leader on the Commission that's going to set the CIP plan, Capital Improvement Plan, that's going to put things in priorities, and let the people of Hancock County know what's on the horizon. I think that if everybody in this room realized how close on the horizon a new jail is, or having to do a huge expenditure to do some kind of expansion or a major overhaul, I doubt there'd be very much discussion about a new fairgrounds. Could be wrong, but people like me, you know, if you're looking at spending $30 million or $40 million, I want to do it to take care of public safety. That being said, I think 4-H is probably the best investment that we can make in our youth. I've got six kids, like I said, and it's been nothing but wonderful for them, but I guess that's it.
All right, thanks, sir. Okay, now we're going to go over for the District Three candidates to answer the same question. Brad, you will start first. I'll go ahead and read it again. "Overcrowding at the jail has been an ongoing point of discussion with possible solutions including building an entirely new facility, expanding our community corrections program, or sentencing more low-level offenders to home detention or probation. What is the best plan for housing our county's growing number of inmates?" What is the best plan for housing our county's growing number of inmates?"
Well, I would start by saying, you know, we did a study in 2010, and that study concluded the next logical step would be a 200-bed community corrections facility at the time that was $3 to $4 million. That's old data. So that's why we commissioned the current study to come up with a good solution. You know, it's going to fall in one of three areas. You're going to have change in procedures, like Randy talked about with bonds, you know, getting guys to work release quicker instead of getting them right into jail, to where you can get them into work release, you can keep them employed and keep them in work release. There's procedural issues, there's potentially more bed space in community corrections, or, you know, the worst-case scenario is we need more jail space. Jail space is expensive. I've become unfortunately quite educated on jail space over the last four years. I've been in and out of our jail, and I can tell you, if we do end up with a new jail, we can have a lot of efficiencies. Our current jail was built in 1988, and from a maintenance standpoint, you know, I work on stuff for a living. You know, I own a garage door company, and I'm familiar with maintaining facilities. And it really wasn't built very user-friendly in mind. So if we end up there, I can tell you, the companies we're working with, you're going to have something that's efficient, and it's, you know, we own it forever. You can't pass this on to the next homeowner. We're all going to pay for this forever. So when you make a bad purchase decision, you need someone that's a leader to be able to purchase and get the right solutions to the problems. So the solution's going to come in one of those three areas. Something, just this week at the commissioner meeting, we had a group come in and talk about some recovery programs. And we work with that through NASA some, and some other programs. But this has come up more often than not, that we need to work on how to reduce recidivism on these users and find a solution to their problem so we can keep them out of jail. So I think we could spend a little money in that area, too.
All right, thank you, sir. Matt Holland, would you like for me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay.
Okay, yes, sir. You're two minutes.
All right. Like I said, I'm going to be kind of redundant here, but as Mr. Sorrell stated, there are things that we can do, and I would plan on working closely with the Hancock County Sheriff's Department, the courts, the prosecutor's office, to try to get some of these sentences of the nonviolent offenders, the low-level crime offenders, particularly drug offenders, alcohol abuse offenders, try to get them moved over into community corrections, which part of the plan, as Mr. Armstrong stated, would be to expand the community corrections as well, so there'd be more bed space there if we go down that road. But immediately, try to get them into home detention programs or probation. That's where they belong. I don't feel that they belong in jail, these low-level offenders that are having drug and alcohol abuse problems. And that leads me to another subject, and Mr. Armstrong briefly hit on it, but I believe a lot of this jail overcrowding obviously is with the state kind of dropping the buck back on us as far as the state sentences. But I think it stems from drug and alcohol abuse and the lack of mental health, mental health care in the state of Indiana. And I will advocate strongly for that as a commissioner at the state level, to increase mental health care in the state, and that will help alleviate some of this overcrowding issue in the jail. I'm also a strong advocate for increasing rehabilitation, funding to rehabilitation programs, and drug awareness programs through such entities as Neighborhoods Against Substance Abuse. I am for increasing funding there to help reduce the recidivism rate, as Brad said, and try to keep these alcohol and drug offenders out of jail. Help them out, they need help, they don't need to be locked up, and try to reduce the recidivism rate, and that will help us in the long run. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Okay, now we will begin with the third question, and this time it is the turn of District Three to begin. So Matt, you just got done talking, but you're going to get the chance to talk first again this time. This question is, "The current Board of Commissioners has not signed a land lease for the proposed county fairgrounds, citing the need for more cost details. When do you think it is appropriate time to move forward with signing a lease?"
Well, I think I've made it pretty clear that I am for signing a lease, given that there are contingencies in that lease that protect the interests of Hancock County. If there is not an agreeable plan or any great progress made on an agreeable plan within the near future, we could have legal jargon there where we can back out of that plan. The reason I say I am for supporting a lease on the county farm for the board is to go out and seek private and corporate donations. Everybody says that's not going to amount to much, but how do we know if we don't try? You can't go to large corporations and ask for large contributions and private donations without having land secured. So I am for giving them the tool of having that lease agreement to go to these corporations and try to secure private and corporate donations. I am for moving the fairgrounds forward, but I'm not for rubber stamping a huge cost to the taxpayers of $30 or $40 million. What I am for is proceeding to the next step. And the next step is trying to get funds for this, and we desperately need the food and beverage tax. Without that, I don't think that this is going to happen anytime in the near future. That has been put on hold until we can get a revised bill through the state legislation, but that is definitely needed, as well as private and corporate contributions. That is why I am for signing a land lease, so I can give them the tool to see how much we can get on that end, coupled with hopefully the food and beverage tax increase, and we'll take it the next step once we have that secured and see if we can come to an agreeable plan for the Hancock County fairgrounds.
Thanks, sir. Brad Armstrong, would you like for me to repeat the question?
I'm familiar with it.
Okay. That's why I thought I would ask. Okay, you have two minutes, sir.
Okay. You know, two years ago, a great group of concerned citizens came to us and wanted to propose a plan to move the fairgrounds to the county farm. At that time, we thought the group should organize and come to the Board of Commissioners with a plan. A plan consists basically of three things. What do you propose to build? What's it going to cost? And how are you going to pay for it? We're two years later and we haven't got all three of those questions answered. That's why there's no lease sign, is because we can't move forward without a plan. This is government. What happens in government is when you spend a little bit of money here and there, well, we've already spent a bunch of money, so we've got to spend more money. That's not a program I'm willing to get involved in. When we have a defined plan that we can execute, and we can get there, we just haven't got there yet. But we need to get our expectations realistic and plug numbers in that'll work, and we can get there. But, you know, just to recklessly sign a lease and say we're going to build $40 million, that's just reckless. I don't feel my constituents elected me to do that. We worked really hard to get our fiscal house back in order, and we could destroy it in one step. And that being said, this issue of fundraising, no company is going to give you money unless you have the same thing that I just asked for, which is, what are you going to build? What's it going to cost? And how are you going to pay for it? Those have to be answered before you can fundraise. So we need to do work. We need to do work to get there. Kind of in my frustration of the timeline, I've proposed that we get a second opinion with another engineering firm on how to do the infrastructure a little cheaper and tweak the project. The project needs to get cheaper. It needs to get into what we can sustain with food and beverage, which is about $12 million. Or we come up with a project that can be phased in in two or three million dollar increments. I'd like to see this happen. I'd like to get to a solution. I'm typically someone that gets things done rather than talks about it, and it's a little frustrating we haven't got there. But we're going to continue to work on it, have open dialogue, and hopefully we'll get there.
Thank you, sir. My apologies. Okay, now we're back over to District One to answer the same question, and Randy Harrison, I'll reread it since they went through over there, but it says, oh, I'm reading the jail one. I like those jail questions, but... "The current Board of Commissioners has not signed a land lease for the proposed county fairgrounds, citing the need for more cost details. When do you think it is appropriate time to move forward with signing a lease?"
When we have a public organization that's ready to lead it. This is where I divert significantly from probably everybody on this panel. There is no place for putting taxpayer money in a private organization where there is no transparency and no rules for open meetings. And that's what is proposed on the table right now. I am against that. When this proposal was originally brought forth, we were told it would be funded by private money. I hesitate to give any public money to a private organization in support. Here's a couple reasons why. If you drive between McCordville and Fortville on Pendleton Pike, you'll see soccer fields. They were built with private money. If you go over the overpass on I-70 at Fortville, on Fortville Pike, you see baseball stadium, baseball fields, built with private money. People are asking the taxpayer in this county to build a 4H for their children. You know, this particular fairgrounds that we have right now, I was told by people who are my age or older, whose parents built that, evidently I wasn't here, with their own hammers and nails. There's no reason that our 4H program cannot build their own 4H fairgrounds. Now, here are the concessions I'm willing to make. We're going to put roads and utilities out that direction anyway. That's fine. We're going to, I wouldn't even mind handing over property to them. But to call this an economic development program, I've been personally to Hendrix County, to Boone County, I'm aware of what's happening at Hamilton County and Shelby County. There is not an example you can show that makes this operation revenue positive or even revenue neutral for this county. It's going to be an albatross around our neck. I'm not for it the way it's currently... I'm waiting.
Hooty-hoo!
There you go, there you go.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll tell you what, you'll have a minute after a while, you can keep going. You were going to town, I tell you. Okay. For you people at home, that is the secret word that I have to get total control here. Okay. John Jessup, the same question. "The Board of Commissioners has not signed a land lease for the proposed county fairgrounds, citing the need for more cost details. When do you think it's appropriate to move forward with signing a lease?"
Wow, there's a lot to touch here. Number one, I think Brad's right on the money. We have to know what the plan is, what it's going to cost, and then figure out if we can pay for it. I think the first thing that I would suggest is that it not be a private group that's overseeing it. If it's something that the elected commissioners of the county feel like is a direction that we need to move in, and feels like it's a priority for our taxpayers, then it should be on the CIP. They should appoint a board to oversee that, to oversee the planning, so that there's some accountability to an elected official. That's the way that I would want to go forward with it. And I lost my train of thought. Wow. But as far as the, whether it's a good idea to do it, I love the idea. I mean, and I wish every one of us had a swimming pool and a hot tub, but, you know, I have six kids that have greatly benefited from 4H. It's the best thing that they've ever done. They've learned things, they, you know, but we don't just get everything that we want. If there's not a way to pay for it, then there's just not a way to pay for it. And a private group has the opportunity to say things and do things, like Randy said, in closed meetings, make plans, manipulate situations that elected officials can't do and appointed boards can't do. And I think that that's what we really lack, is openness and transparency. If, I think one thing we could do is take a look at our current fairgrounds and see what kind of improvements we could make there at a much smaller expense. But I don't think that the path that we're on is the path that we need to be on.
Thanks, sir. Randy Sorrell, you need me to repeat the question, or?
No, I think I'm familiar.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I think that I was quoted in the paper as saying that I was taking a wait-and-see approach to this project, and that was almost a perfect quote. The fairgrounds is obviously a major issue. There are problems with the one we have. There's, the county has land to the east of town that would be a suitable site. It makes sense if you have a need and you've got an asset, can you bring the need and the asset together? That makes sense, conceptually. But as always, the devil being in the details, I know there was a master plan that's been promulgated. I know that Brad indicated, excuse me, Brad indicated that a couple of days ago, he mentioned he'd like to see maybe a different engineering firm take, be consulted with, to do a needs assessment, and to critique what we have currently, what that, what the needs and the amenities of the current fairgrounds are, whether that can be used or if in fact a move should occur. I think that's a good idea. I am, talked about the lease and wanting to know cost numbers. Well, you know, cost is only half the equation. The other side is funding those costs, and that's where those resources come from, where those revenue streams. You know, the thought was, well, okay, we have a food and beverage tax, that's an optional tax because you don't have to go out to eat, and you can pay that, and that's nice, and that would fund this. But if that funding mechanism is not there, which certainly today it doesn't exist, then the costs almost aren't relevant, because if there's no way to pay it, you know, the option, obviously there is a way to pay for it, and that's if you start talking about increasing people's property taxes, and that is a place angels fear to tread, and I walk among them. I have said I own two pieces of property in this county. I own a home and a business, and I have no desire to raise my taxes for that asset either.
Thank you, sir. Hey, you actually get a couple of extra seconds for the secret code that everybody knows now, it's not secret. All right, gentlemen, we have, we've got, I want to ask one more question, and basically this is kind of more for either the people in the audience or the people that are going to be watching this. However, I'm going to give you a minute and 15 seconds to answer this. So at a minute, I'll ding the bell, minute 15, I'll ding it again, minute 20, the hooty-hoo comes out. So hopefully it goes. But for just, there's a lot of people that probably have no idea what a commissioner does. So Randy Harrison, you get to start first as far as this time. So I would, I'd like to ask you, what do you consider the role of a county commissioner in a community?
The county commissioner is the planner, the executive of the county. He's the person who sets the priorities for spending fundamentally. They do have fiduciary powers. They can sign leases. You know, if a vision is going to get executed in the county, it's going to have to start with the commissioners. They're the initiators of ideas. They're the people who have the ears, you know, to listen to what the needs are. They tend to be go-betweens between private and for-profit people and the county, the government. They oversee the government operations. It's just, it's an executive administrative role.
All right, thank you, sir. John Jessup, same question. What do you consider the role of a county commissioner in a community?
Well, I think the county commissioner's role, in addition to what Randy said, is number one, to listen and see what the people of the county are saying, what direction they would like to see our county go and our communities go. And that's something that I've been criticized sometimes because, well, you know, you don't say a lot in council meeting. But I've found in my life that if I listen more, then I get a lot more information and I can do a lot more. There's a lot of people that like to talk and hear their voice. I like to hear the voice of everybody out there. And then you take that information, and you figure out what's going to be best for the most amount of people. And you can't worry about if it's best for the people in District One or District Three or the people on the west side or the east side. You have to look at it as a whole and see what direction do we need to go as a county? And then you execute. And that's what I do. I'm not trained as a lawyer to make arguments. I'm not trained to, you know, handle people's money and make those kind of decisions. I build. I take somebody's vision, I take manpower and materials, and then I execute. And that's what I do. That's what I think commissioners should do.
Thank you, sir. Now Randy Sorrell, the same question, sir.
Repeat it for me?
Yes, sir. What do you consider the role of a county commissioner in a community?
Okay. Thought I had it. Well, I'll give you the legal answer first, and I'll give you how I interpret it. Indiana, like all states, have separated powers. We thought when the national government was formed, that was a good idea to break power up. In the Indiana system, in the countywide system, the division of powers are that the Board of Commissioners is the legislative branch and the executive branch. And the financial branch is the county council, which Mr. Jessup and I currently sit. So the function of the Board of Commissioners is to establish policy and administer those policies. They write the ordinances, they... the ordinances. They, someone needs a pothole fixed or a road built, they're the ones that make that decision, but they can't spend the money without the approval of the council. That's how we have these divided powers. Now, that's the function. What is the role? Slightly different. I believe that the role of the county commissioner is to lead, but the paradox is it's leading by following, and that is, it's the popular will. To meet with the voters, because the voters are the citizens. The voters are the ones, it's your community, it's our community. Let your voices be heard. Direct how you want to see us follow your will, and that's how I intend to lead.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Now, we're gonna go over to the District Three candidates with the same question. Brad, I have it down that you will start first. "What do you consider the role of a county commissioner in a community?"
Well, I think first of all, it's our job to represent the citizens of Hancock County in all items related to county government. It's being a good steward of taxpayers' money, providing the critical services that are needed in Hancock County. I can give you a job description of about two hundred different things that you do in this job, and some of them I had no idea when I started, that we're, you know, what we would end up doing. It's all-encompassing. I think the simple minute fifteen second answer is, a commissioner is one of three people that does roles similar to what a mayor does in a city. You're a leader, but, you know, no one can go off the rails too far, because you gotta get two other guys to go with you, and you gotta get council to go with you. So you have to be very pragmatic in this position to be able to accomplish things. But, you know, it's the highest executive position in the county, in county government, and you're there to be a leader and represent your constituents and do a good job for them. I take it very seriously, and I'm very proud of what we've done there.
Thank you, sir. Matt Holland, what do you consider the role of a county commissioner in a community?
Well, everybody gave good answers, and it's left me with not very much to kinda add to the equation, but I believe that, obviously, it's the executive branch of the of the county government, and I, like Brad said, it's basically the role of a county manager split into a board of three people. You're the eyes and ears of the citizens of Hancock County. You go out, you listen to their voices, and you carry out the will of the majority of the citizens of Hancock County, and you do that to the best of your ability. And beyond that, you're also an advocate for Hancock County. You work hand-in-hand with the Hancock County Economic Development Council. You try to be a, basically, for lack of a better word, a cheerleader for Hancock County, going out and getting these, the businesses and the type of growth that you, that the people and citizens of Hancock County need and want in Hancock County. I would also be an advocate at state level, 'cause a lot of decisions made in the state legislature affect Hancock County government greatly. I would have a proactive role in trying to be involved in the Indiana counties' associations and the county commissioners' associations in the state, and advocate strongly for Hancock County in the best interest of its citizens.
Thank you, sir. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the questions that we were able to have. What we're going to do now, I'm gonna give each candidate one minute to summarize whatever they wanna talk about. If they didn't have a chance to answer something, or if they have one minute to give their plea, so that you can give them that thing that they each want is your vote. So, and I'm gonna start with District Three, and Matt, I know you just finished, but I'm going to start with you. It's your turn to start first, so Matt, you have one minute. At forty-five seconds, I'll ding the bell, just so that you know timing, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I wanna thank everybody again for taking time out of their Friday night to come in and listening to the ideas of the Hancock County Commissioner candidates. My campaign boils down to this, basically. If you're not happy with politics, as usual, in Hancock County, don't hope for change, but instead vote for change. A vote for Matt Holland for Commissioner is a vote for a fresh and new vision for Hancock County. I would appreciate your vote on May third, and by being proactive, together we could build a safer and better community and strive towards a brighter future for the citizens of Hancock County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brad Armstrong, I'd like to do the same for you. You have one minute to state what you'd like for the people to know.
Over the last eight years, with the help of my fellow elected officials and our valued employees, we've been able to provide a strong foundation for our economic turnaround in a vibrant Hancock County. January first, 2017, one of these three men at the end of the table will be your District One Commissioner, newly elected, new to the position. Commissioner Mark Huber will start the second, the second half of his first term in office. And my opponent is a good man, and he's chosen a noble profession, and I respect him for that. But I would ask that you support me on my reelection, to allow me to use my eight years of over proactive experience as a commissioner, and my over twenty years' experience as a business owner, and my proven leadership in Hancock County. And with that, that'll allow us to write the next chapter in the Hancock County success story. I'd appreciate your support on May third. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to start here. I have it down that it's John Jessup's turn to start first with this group, so John, you have one minute to tell the people what you want them to know at the finalization of a statement.
Again, thank you, everybody, for coming out and hearing what we have to say, and thank you for Greenfield Reporter and the library having us, and you, Wayne, moderating. I just wanna tell you, the number-one thing I am is a father, a husband. I was in business for ten years. I'm a manager. I manage multimillion-dollar construction projects. That's what I do. That's how I look at things. That's how I look at our problems. Number one is, how's it gonna affect my kids? How's it gonna affect my household? And how's it gonna affect our community? And that's what I'll bring to the table. I wanna look out for your children and grandchildren, the same as I look out for mine. I wanna look out for your pocketbook, the same as I have to look out for mine. And I understand that everything we do affects everybody. Every dollar we spend is one dollar that you can't spend on your family, and I think that is why I would like to be elected, and then I would really appreciate your vote on May third.
Thank you, sir. Now Randy Sorrell, you have one minute to summarize your statement for this evening.
Thank you. In a few days, I'm gonna turn sixty, and I am seeking elective office for the first time. I suppose the question is, why at this stage in your life would you choose to do this? And the obvious answer is, because I have the time and I can. I have done my duty. I have raised my kids. I've put two kids through school, through college, they're successes, and I'm proud of that. I've practiced law in this community for thirty years. I'm proud of my career as a building a business and maintaining a business in this community. I love this community. I have given thousands of hours in public service to this community, all volunteer. I have shown up for more events and written more checks to more fundraisers than you can imagine, and this is the capstone of my career. This is me about leaving the county and leaving public life better than I founded. And I, all I wanna say is, we had ten minutes to give you answers to complex questions. That's not long enough. I have lengthy answers and lengthy plans and lengthy solutions, and call me anytime, seven-six-two-three-three-five-zero. I will meet with you. I will talk with you, and we will get together, and you can say hooty-hoo if you want to, but I want to tell you how we can continue the good work that has been begun in this community and see it through.[1639.15][1639.15](laughter) Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you, sir, and I wish we had a whole lot more time. Obviously, I do. Now, we'd like to have Randy Harrison. You have one minute to summarize your candidacy.
Thank you all for coming out. Thank you to the reporter, to Nine Star, to the library. I've been involved in leadership my whole adult life, nonprofit for twenty years. I led an international mission organization on three continents, did all kinds of fundraising. I've led for-profit businesses with my brothers. My family had an insurance agency in Cumberland for thirty-five years, and now I'm a financial advisor, self-employed. I pay taxes just like you. I feel the crunch. I know how to lead. I've proven my leadership in other places. I've also demonstrated my commitment to this community by leading the Tea Party. This community needs a new voice. I got Randy's, I got Randy's flyer here in the mail today. He proclaims his connections to the county very deep. This is not what, we've already got this. What we need is a new voice. My name's Randy Harrison. I need your vote.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, everybody in the audience. We do appreciate it. Like I say, we've got five good men here that are trying to get two positions that are extremely important for our community. I'd like to wish, if everybody would, give these guys a round of applause.[1728.65][1728.65](applause) It's certainly not easy putting yourself out there in front of the public, but these guys are, they're passionate about what they want to do, how they wanna help our community, and I appreciate them doing that. I don't know where we are as far as on time, but I think we got very close to it. If any of you are interested, next Wednesday night, we will be doing the same thing. We have eleven candidates for Hancock County Council at large. Again, everybody in the county can vote for those positions. Three people will be nominated for that. It will be next Wednesday night at the Greenfield Central High School. It starts at five-thirty. We're gonna go that one till seven o'clock, so they might be able to, of course, they won't be able to answer as many questions, because there are more people. But thank you very much, and everybody have a safe trip home. Thank you very much.[1783.01][1783.01](applause) Good job, guys.